Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and thank you for all of your blessings. We thank you Heavenly Father for the opportunity to serve and we would ask Lord if you would bless our decisions, help us that we might seek your will and seek your direction and we might do the best job for the city of Howland for their citizens. Lord, we just thank you for your goodness in Jesus's name.
At this time, we'll do public requests and we do have a card from Ned Cook on the memorial park.
I have with me Bill Collins. Bill has a lot more information to kind of lay a foundation for this. If you'd give Bill just a few minutes to tell us about a little project we've got over here. You may have seen it over around the First Christian Church. And we have some long-range plans and Bill is kind of the fellow who pioneered this idea. And Bill, if you'd just go ahead and kind of lay the foundation for us and we'll see if they have any questions or need any additional information.
Yeah, if it's a crippled man, we can get him. I appreciate the opportunity to discuss with you the plans that we have and we hope it will be something that Howl will be proud of and the citizens will be proud of. I happen to be a native of Howl and more than going to Young's because his house is still there. I'm here from Washington for a minute. Toward school in Howl in 1919. I'll give you an idea of where I am now. I went four years there at Toward School down and caught a few of the families that sent kids to Sherman. Greens had a patrol on the corner, Stockers had a blackberry store, Road to Old and Urban back in Fort Sherman. Our family's off the team, kind of plenty of me. My family was maybe the best school in South Sherman where the oldest families were. So I already had a choice. They enrolled us in the worst, the old worst school. They were a good choice too. And we started the first day. The next day, they transferred us out to a new school, way up on Wood Street before we had to get off of it. Corner Travis and Contrae, over down by KT through the park. Crown Creek, old creek is a highway and that one the creek is, Crown Steve Bank. And we never knew whether the administration really wanted people in new schools or whether it's fine people in South Sherman, anyone to contain it as country people. But anyway, this project, as I said, I hope that we, Howl will be proud of and will indicate in the future what the Howl is about. My mother had a sister, Maime Roberts, and Maime was her, was obsessed with natural beauty. Maime never married and she lived with her mother out in the house way out on the road going to Tombeen. And she spent her whole, she taught school a little bit, but she didn't like it very much. So she spent her time making gardens around that house. She didn't like it. And when her mother died, she made her home to us. By that time, we had moved to the family farm out by Foremanton and all those people that joined out. So she lived with us and she started beautifying it. And it's like having her own private garden. She built, batted seed and batted this and that and the other, all around the house. And right after the war, I bought the Roy's house, here with the house that is now. And my mother daddy moved up there. Maime took on that project, beautifying it, like gardens all around the house. And meantime, she had, in her efforts to improve not only our homes, but she took on the Howl as a project. And we arranged for it to have a room down here in the old blackberry house, south part of town. And she started going around. Well, she got mad because the radio station in Dallas was talking about all the towns in Texas and completely ignored all the smaller towns. And this made her very indignant. She thought small towns should be recognized somewhere. So she set out a program to make Howl, to get recognition, make Howl the prettiest little town in Texas. And it did get the attention of a number of people, including the Dallas News. I earned a little bit of money. She was a correspondent for the Dallas News and the Howl Messenger here and Sherman Democrat and the Dennis Bureau. And she would write articles about Howl, all these papers. The Dallas News picked it up and asked her to write a series of articles about how to go about beautifying small towns. And she was helping organize a bunch called Assist Me Come Up Here Now. And they got their, they got attention going around and asking homes to start beautifying their yards. Harry Winkler luck, they worked on to find out who the owner was, get the owner to keep the weeds down and maybe plant some flowers. And so she wrote this series of articles for the Dallas News and they were published and caught the attention of garden clubs and cities all over North Texas. And she was in great demand as a speaker. Now, when she died, we found in her possession a scrapbook of used articles and we didn't know if she had. I'd say where these news articles were fit me about her talks to various clubs from North Texas and her work in beautifying small towns. I tried to sort of these, they were all very brittle, brittle paper, as a chromograph. So I rescued and preserved as many as I could and minded him on the form, I hope they will accept, to the Texas Historical Commission and decided that she was worthy of consideration for a Texas Historical Memorial. So I wrote an application using, I'll make these signings available in a book form for the historical museum, the Howl Commission, placed out and handed grade sale for her work and her accomplishments. And I sent the application into the Texas Historical Commission after approval by the local president, the Historical Commission. And to my surprise, it was approved very quickly. I had some other chair in the other application, it had taken months. A lot of correspondence begging for it to get approved. This required no affirmation. And all I did was send a whole thick of the pages of these, of these new documents with the historical names. On my first thought was to have it as usual, for the seatperson, to put the Historical Memorial to approve, add her graveside and elk in an acre cemetery. But then I did some sort of experience with the, as a matter of fact, the Howl Church here. I was baptized there and my father was a science student, sometimes a preacher. And I was about one of the last ones left to live when the congregation got so small that it couldn't rock a support at the full-time church. Not exactly the time before that. In order to sustain a little law, probably may know this, I bought the veil from the congregation just to give them some income to try to hire a preacher for a few more weeks. Then when a few of them were left, decided that we had no use for it and we donated it to the city of Howl, which was done. And then we were ready for the historical society to organize. The mayor and the city of Manaykaya decided that we could, well, we could try to make a three billion deal. And how many donations, some seed money, $1,000 and then they put notes in the water bill of the, after the congregation to restore the old church building. Before that got well underway, we had an opportunity to buy the old restaurant over here, so making it much more suitable for the person. But we made a bad mistake. I think, let's not, I'll just take it back. I was about to own my life. By that time, I was only way to make any decisions. So we took all the woodwork, the door facing, windows facing, the windows out of church building and put them on an effigy there where, behind the stage and replicated one of the windows there now today and built a little housing of the veil out in front. After that, the historical society was formed and I'm sure there was now they had the veil back and all the door facing and everything. So I'm kind of a doghouse with the historical society. But anyway, I've talked to them about, maybe since they had a nice lawn on the south there, would it be feasible to put in a garden there and call it, Maime Roberts on there with a garden and Harry Walker and others agreed that it would be. So we started to proceed with it and Ned Cook, who highly recommended and experienced in designing gardens and yards, could come up with a design. And we started to work on it and then, Harry, I think some of you got the lease agreement that had been made with the city. Well, maybe they're taking a look, just look at that lease. And so she got me a copy of it and I discovered two or three things that I don't think are going to be a problem, though it's not a problem, but at least want to make it to your attention. First is that, I don't want to criticize the Ron Clark, but I like to take a pretty drawing, but it's imprecise and doesn't make any distinction between property, church, premises, and that sort of thing, I don't know if it's all included. I'm assuming that, first of all, 14 and 15. I'm assuming that's the entirety, the yard, the lawn and the church building, six. That's included in the lease agreement. May need clarifying, I don't know, but I'm assuming that the lease covers the grounds for the grounds. Then I read on down the lease and I said, it indicated that no additions or changes can be made without written approval of Howl City Council. Well, that raised basically is what we're doing, preparing a garden there and building a little truck, is not a change, because I need city council approval. I don't know, but I'm just bringing it here to the council of Kansas here, to see if they will do what, whatever is required. And the other is that it specifies, I mean, the speech specifies, a one-year lease, annually renewable, like one mentions rent for one year, a dollar a year, does not mention any rental or succeeding years, it only provides for an annual, for an automatic annual renewal. We're assuming that the continued rental will be a dollar a year. And Gary Walker told me that she is the, the historical society, had paid the city $20 for a rental for 20 years. I said, that's not long enough. We want this to be, like longer, something in the, but all future sets of power must end up out of. So we sent the historical society another $50, basically submitted to the city. And I hope that that covers the lease, never, and a rental for seven years, which is going to be here 2067. Just one thing we'll take a look at and clarify. And I said to you, I think we'll need a building permit, but I don't know, you know what we're doing. And these things are required, I'll be waiting to listen.
I'd like for Ned to tell you, give me something about the plans that he has. Can we just take a quick look at this, at this drawing? This is, some of you know Heather Meyer, she finished her first year of tech in design this year, lives over here in the east part of town. And Sam, she only made four points. Now, one quiz I took when I was in college, I made 17 on and I know she beat that, but she told me she only had four points in her freshman year. It just didn't sound good to me. That's a perfect, great point, Heather. Now, this is, this is, that little lady's work, it kind of gives you an idea of what the, what we're going to do is, to make the memorial park out of this, we're going to plant trees in here. One family that we've talked about is Corrigan Wiling Pooh, we're putting a memorial red oak tree or something in this area here and having a plaque on a boulder that says this is a memorial tree to, you know, to the outstanding contributors to our community through the years, various people that we'd like to honor. So that's, that gives you just a quick summary of what the project would look like and if there are any questions, we'd be glad to answer those. We thank you for your time.
Well, when we have the, if this is all approved and goes through, and we complete the garden and if then we can put the, we can put the historical memorial in the garden rather than the, the cemetery. And we'd like to make this a fairly legal fair term for Howl, both the dedication of the historical memorial. There can be a lot of people interested in it around, as well as the memorial park, the dedicated park, if that's what's going on. And we certainly like for all of you to be guests, the dedication of both the park and the, incidentally, in the invitation, it will be us more than Maime about Maime. She was recognized nationally by a national IDLE that sent a target in the 1940s, materials about. And the Pottery and Rock provided with a great commission. And a reader's digest, unfortunately, I was not able to find a copy of the reader's digest when that appeared, weed smell came up to the copy that's kept preserved all these years, which is probably great to tell, you know, the radio of town of Howl and what great things we've done as a daughter of Maime Roberts and issue and work. And then the crown, the founding door, I guess, was Eleanor Roosevelt during the federal administration had a radio program and she, she recognized outstanding women in the United States. And Maime was one of them, one that was recognized. And she was awarded a silver flutter, which had disappeared. We don't know where, where it was, our memory city, but she was recognized as one of them. Recognized nationally and Judge Jake Boyd had written a letter, I was sending it to the nation. The Dallas News saying how proud, great guy he was of Maime Roberts and working any other woman, but done more to beautify and get more of the small towns than Maime Roberts. And she became a nationally recognized figure and a person who brought very, very favor from Kansas to Howl, which I think deserves some preservation for the future. And Howl at the time was a pretty little town in Texas. She wanted to make that.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Martha, will you check on that, please bring the list of the titles to tie in, see if there are any requirements that are needed for the historical community?
Just when I go put water in the pond and stuff like that and then you can.
No, there is one other point that I'd like to make and I realize, and all these things I realize, one council can't commit, and that's talking about another council, but they can't express a desire or your wishes of what might happen. But some 20 years ago, someone may know this, my wife and I established a will and grace, will and grace in the memorial fund with a $25,000 grant to the city of Howl. The only stipulation that it'd be used for public purpose. And I think it would be, now, at that time, CD were bringing about 12, 14 percent a year and the income from it was very substantial. Now, it's not very much. Whatever revenue, it may, hopefully it will be more in the future, but whatever revenue it produces, I think it would be, it would certainly suggest to us, to the people, if that revenue can be used to maintain the park. And the other point is that I worry a little bit about what happens to the historical society if it ceased to exist. Who would be responsible for the park? And I would like for Howl City Council to at least consider making it a park on their park system.
Well, I think according to the lease right now, that if the historical society does dissolve, it does become, it does revert back to city.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Just a last departmental report, the city administrator, free city webpage.
It's not a free city webpage, but y'all still wrong, so we won't have that. We can have a free city webpage, but it's just place $200 to do it. They didn't tell me that for.
I'm sure we got a lot of talented people in Howl, civic-minded people who can do that.
I was planning on writing y'all letters. There's some things when you have a city webpage that is going to be hard to maintain, unless all ordinances updated, council minutes, meetings, I mean, it's going to be pretty difficult to keep that part of it up, so I just seem to not get them right now personally. We will be listed as a city with numbers and everything, council on the time you go pledge when you get to the first one.
Can we move on to all business? The steward present on account, any?
That's the one that we left off last time. I need y'all, I guess I need your okay to go ahead. Tim's been working on that. It's changed a little bit. He came up here about a week ago and where that line comes out, the line's going to come across the field and out to Henning Street, across Henning Street by Bluebird. And Tim came up and we're looking at doing a little bit more work past Bluebird too and trying to get some more plate tile over the ground. And maybe fix a line that goes up on the north side of Henning Street, or Fort DME. Let's be a right inside like going out. Getting it out of highway and maybe putting it over in the yard to, just to, it'd be a lot easier to work on and stuff, just something to add and plus next plate tile will do. And he's coming up with some figures. I mean, y'all know what we're doing, of course, but he's just talking about upgrading that one side a little bit more. And it sounds pretty good.
This was the page that was left off of last?
Last month, yeah.
I reckon we'll need to.
Yeah. What was it?
To add the south end.
This is like we added the one behind the apartment last time. I need y'all, I need you to go ahead and.
Do we do one across this?
It's not going to be more than what we got left over, that one bonded issue on that pipe, on that new surge of, it won't, it won't be over there.
Gary, on there? 4-4, no yes. Do you consider a garden recreation appointment? Jerry, Mark, you have any? I spoke to Scotty Harris and he lives on Maple Street and he is interested in an appointment with the county of Kansas. Scotty Harris.
I'll go with that. Want to turn yours?
On four? And now we have executive session. The city council convening closed session pursuant to provisions of the open meeting law, chapter 551, government code, Vernon's Texas code is annotated in accordance to the authority contained in section 551, dot zero seven four, personnel. Consider appointments planned in zoning commissions and on expired terms. 88623, we are now in executive session. All is considered, any comments? Turn of Todd Strasner. Sam? All in favor?
So how long does that take? That's an expired term.
Will you fill James Ross's? Do you hear terms?
It's May of 2003.
New business, we need to consider the consent items. We have the minutes, we need a report, police department report and maintenance secretary minutes.
Your name?
Gary, on this stand? All four? 4-4, no yes. Now we have the discussion on the city of Van Austin and the search disposal. Ms. Lewis and the spirit here represent that city's right.
I think each and every one of y'all's got a copy of this. First of all, I'd like to thank y'all for giving us an opportunity to be here tonight, leave us an opportunity to provide the south end of the county with some quality EMS. I know that y'all have looked at these figures and you're trying to figure out why it's so much more. And the reason is, is in the, in the first sheet of paper, Medicaid and Medicare, it's just not paying what they used to pay for these ambulance rides. And you don't have the nursing homes in Sherman to pull some of the subsidy from to balance this out. So what we've done is we took the current rate that they're paying Vail Savoy now, which is $22,000 a month. And we totaled that up for 12 months. And then we took half of that and gave it to the county. And that's the county in place. And then we took and divided it up, 35% for Van Austin and 35% for Howl and a 44% for Gunner. And at the meeting with Gunner, they said, well, we're not, we're half the size of Van Austin and Howl and still we got 30%. Well, that's just the way it figured out. That was a fair way to do it, a fair way for everybody to really have a fair share of paying subsidy for the ambulance. My concern is, is for the three cities to have a quality EMS that we've not had for a long time. You look now, where's your ambulances coming from and you don't know where they're coming from. So, you know, I listened to the radio one time and they were sending an ambulance from McKinney to Howl. That's a long way for an ambulance to come to get a patient, okay? Sherman was tied up. So you really don't know where your ambulance is coming from and where you're getting it. So what I'm going to do is make a quality EMS for the citizens in the south end of this county and hopefully as it grows, we can add ambulances to it, okay? But this is proposal here is to start off with two ambulances and staff these ambulances where we have some EMS care to our citizens, okay? Probably 75% of the calls that's going to be made with these ambulances is going to be Medicaid and Medicare. So you're going to wind up being like all the rest of these guys that these privatized services that came in and tried to put a service in and depend on Medicaid and Medicare to pay when you're running to these nursing homes and Medicaid and Medicare is not paying what they used to pay, okay? Their subsidies has probably been cut in half. That took effect April last. And that's why these people are not being able to stay in business. You cannot give a quality patient care, you're going to have to hire the cheapest paramedics and EMTs and what you're getting is people fresh out of school and then when they get them a start in the business, then they move on to bigger companies and they draw more money. So, and you know, police departments has the same problem in a small town. So with these, with these subsidies that I'm asking for from everybody, we'll have to go back and get 858 calls at a 40% collection rate with the subsidies and the call collected to make it back to square zero. All I want to do is break even, okay? If we can break even and still have a quality EMS care, that's what I want. I'm not in this for the city of Van Austin or anybody else to make any money out of this, just break even. And I guess what I'm asking tonight is from the council is to give us a yes or no on whether we can count on y'all for this $51,381.52 and then we can hopefully have an EMS service in business within 60 to 90 days. I would like to have one in service by October.
Does anybody have any questions how we came to the figures, like collection rate or? I know somebody who's not in the business, a 40% collection rate sounds very low.
Sure.
The highest collection rate we found anybody getting in this county is 48%. And actually, that's not, that's what they promised they could get us was 48%. The county EMS consultant said our 40% was too high and said you should shoot for 36%. Sherman collects around 42, 43%.
But we really don't know, you know, what the call volume is going to be because the last two ambulance services that was in was really not an accurate account of how many calls we made. two ambulance services that was in was really not an accurate, uh, account of how many calls we made. Uh, with LiveTech, what happened if the ambulances in Van Alstine was busy and that truck made a call and there wasn't any trucks there, they sent one of their trucks out of Anna to Van Alstine or Howe, that ambulance call went back in county to Collin County. So we really don't know what these, what these ambulances are running as far as run wise. So it's hard to say how much we're gonna be able to collect out of it. You know, we might be in this one year and come back to y'all next year and say, hey, we don't need this much subsidy to run them. See what I'm saying?
Yeah.
We really don't know.
What's the Van, uh, it's gonna be run out of Van Alstine.
Out of Van Alstine, by the way.
Uh, what's the city doing down there? Are they, are they claiming you guys or?
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir. This is our last deal right here. Everything has been, our councils jumped on it first of all. Uh, I went to the meeting in Gunner, they're in for forty-four thousand. Looks like the county's gonna be in for their hundred and twenty-six thousand. So all we're asking is, is, you know, at least let us know what we can count on so we can go ahead and start planning. If, if not, then we'll have to go back to privatized services. And that's gonna be about seven hundred, uh, eight hundred thousand dollars for them to cover.
And that's due to the reason that for every emergency call you run out of the county, like rural metro, LiveTech, they would run five non-emergency calls in Sherman. Make up.
They made a difference for it.
And they use the backup ambulance to staff with the non-emergency companies.
But we really, like I say, we really don't know how many calls they ran out of Van Alstine. The county doesn't even know. So we're not gonna know until we run it for a year to see how it's gonna turn out. You know, we might come back next year and say, hey, we don't leave with twenty thousand. All I care about doing is breaking out even with this ambulance service and getting some quality patient care. That's number one. And we haven't had that since MTS went out of business.
Right now we're covered by what?
Vail Savoy.
Relatively. And, uh, they've got a guy stationed down and they got a.
They have one truck stationed in Van Alstine. Now that one truck has to run three seasons. Okay, like today, they was on a call in Gunner. We had a call at Metabrook Care Center. We had to first respond and then we had to get an ambulance out of Sherman to come down and take that patient to the hospital.
Response time is forty-three minutes.
You see, if you're having cardiac arrest, twenty-three minutes is a long time.
You've got two, two, uh, two trucks, right?
We will have two ambulance. See, we hadn't ordered, our ambulances, when we go into business, we'll be grand, thank you, ambulance. But we've not made any plans to order any ambulances or get any of our permits from TDAH or any of this until we make sure that everybody is in with us.
Where is the funding gonna come to start this?
City of Van Alstine.
And the reason we're trying to hustle right now, we can go into business October first. We cannot even apply for a provider license until we have ambulance set in the driveway. We get the ambulance set in the driveway, do all the paperwork, get inspected by TDAH. They give us provider's license, then we can apply for Medicare and Medicaid, which is gonna be a ninety-day turnaround. So we won't even be able to collect money for ninety days after we get a.
It will take, it will take, it'll take six months for the city of Van Alstine to actually start collecting money back.
So the contract will be with the city of Van Alstine?
Yes, yes, it will be the city of Van Alstine.
And what is the term of the contract gonna initially be?
That I don't know.
We'd like to see three years.
I'd like to see three years.
Just due to the fact that's where our lease purchase agreement's gonna probably be with the ambulance.
So with the current city administrator, who would be in charge of the ambulance service?
Fire department. Fire department, city of Van Alstine.
Okay, so who's in charge of the ambulance service? If there's, if I have a problem with the contract agreement or something like that, who am I to strike my city administrator a call?
City administrator of Van Alstine.
You'll contact who?
Me.
The two ambulance you're gonna have, they're gonna be both twenty-four hour cars or?
They'll be, uh, one twenty-four hour truck and one twelve hour truck. Okay, now, your twelve hour truck that's gonna be sitting in the station, so we know that back half of that twelve hours will be also be available to run and make calls. But it'll be done with volunteers. We're gonna have two trucks running twenty-four hours a day.
Uh, it's gonna be done with volunteers, but you, but you got salaries down here for, for paramedics. Go ahead and take.
How does that, uh, one paramedic and one EMT are the day car Monday through Friday. And then you have three EMTs and three paramedics and the twenty-four hour truck working twenty-four hours on, forty-eight hours off. That takes them out. And then the supervisor is also gonna supervise, is also gonna have to work fifty-four hour, I mean fifty-four shifts a year on the twenty-four hour truck just to cover for people having holidays and vacation time.
So the supervisor will be on the front train?
Yes.
And so, Robert, you're gonna be the supervisor or are you just?
Oh, I will be the boss.
Okay.
I will be the man that's in charge of all of it.
So you are, you would be the supervisor?
Yes, but not, uh, not a medical control that needs to be in the fire station. I will be the supervisor over the fire station and the EMS, yes.
But the supervisor listed here is not you.
Not me.
That's a good question.
Yes.
Who is that?
Lead red beard. There's no way I'm gonna give up my, my business for that page.
Another question, Robert, the fifty-one, three eighty-one, fifty-two, is that lump sum, monthly, quarterly?
No, that'll be paid quarterly, just like it is now. I believe that's the way, I know Van Alstine pays it, uh, quarterly.
What do we pay monthly?
Now you do, but I mean with, with LiveTech, would you not pay in every three months?
We're paying, we're paying monthly.
We're paying monthly.
Well, that's why we didn't lose anything.
Smart move.
Can you not get Anna in this or does it cross Grayson line or?
Anna has, Anna had a grocery last week about this. But here's the problem there. We have two different counties and two different road calls.
EMS road calls.
Now, uh, at one time, when Fesher had the, had the ambulance service, he ran Anna, Weston, Westminster and Melissa. I don't have a problem with that, but my concern is the south end of Grayson County right now. Okay, now, after this gets going good, if there's a way to purchase another truck and maybe take the north end of Collin County on and it'll break down everybody's subsidies and make it cheaper, then I'm all for it. Okay, but we need to get the south end of Grayson County, take and carry out and get it to run in and make it right before we try to go into some other county to start helping out.
So Van Alstine's the south anchor and so you're going off to the west, you're going off to the north. What about Tom Bean?
White Run EMS.
White Run EMS has that.
White Run EMS, yes.
You, where are the trucks going to be? Say, you're gonna have one in Gunner?
No.
No.
So their response time's gonna be whatever it is to get over there.
Yes.
Right?
Which is eleven miles.
Is that on one twenty-one?
Well, that's the way it's always been though.
That's the way it's always been.
They're always, all of the private ambulances always have all the stations out there. You can't afford to put one there the whole time.
Because there's not that much, the call volume over there is not like it is in, in Howe and Van Alstine. So it wouldn't be feasible to put a truck in Gunner. So that's why that truck's always ran out of, kind of Van Alstine too.
The safe estimate would be about forty percent of calls you run out of Gunner will be non-emergency calls from nursing homes, just more than throughout time over there.
So I mean, that's gonna be, it's gonna be one of those Medicaid and Medicare calls, you see what I'm saying? So.
Why, why is it that Medicare and Medicaid is a hundred percent collectively?
No, sir. No, sir.
All you have to do is make one mistake, one little bitty typo error, and then we jack it.
And resubmit it, right?
Well, as an ambulance provider too, you're required to take assignment on Medicaid. We cannot build the balance. What Medicare pays is what we get and that's it. We cannot go back and say, we had a six hundred dollar ambulance bill, Medicare decided to pay a hundred and seventy dollars. And that's what they'll pay on seven. Basic life support, non-emergency transport is a hundred and seventy dollars. Which sounds like a lot of money. But you have a fifty thousand dollar ambulance, you're paying your paramedic thirty thousand dollars a year, you're paying your EMT twenty-seven thousand dollars a year. And the maintenance, a hundred and seventy dollars for two and a half hours of your time and the equipment you use is not a whole lot of money. And we can't go back and build our balance.
So it's really, the cities are subsidizing.
Right.
Exactly.
Same way the Bonham, Bonham Fire Department went in the business yesterday because East Texas EMS no longer make a profit from Bonham. Grand Prairie EMS, Fire Department's back in EMS business because rural metro couldn't make a profit. The private companies are leaving. In the eighties, in the early nineties, whatever, Medicare, Medicaid and insurance companies were making big bucks or private companies popping up everywhere. They're all gone now. Not all of them. There's still a few modern pop in Dallas area.
So what are we meant to do tonight? Just, because we will have to incorporate that in the budget.
Yes, we will. We can prove that idea and go with Van Alstine or we can add them to a man there of money and.
And my answer will be, we can't, I'm telling folks, I'm telling y'all right now, this is just a fire mill. It's, it's so close that I'm almost afraid to go into the business because I don't wanna be tired and fed up and ran out of Van Alstine. Okay, and that's what's gonna happen if this doesn't work. Because all of this right here was my deal and my doing. And everybody in Van Alstine is gonna be looking at me and saying, why are we two hundred thousand dollars in the red on EMS bills? See, my work, once y'all say yes, my work's not stopped. Because what these other privatized services has tore down and people's confidence in an EMS service, I've got to build it back up. So in other words, it gets the revenue built back up.
If the citizen sees somebody waiting on the side of the road for twenty minutes for ambulance and now they're going by private car.
Then you can't blame them. You know, there's still folks out there that can't go by private car, which needs an ambulance and, and probably as quick as possible. If it's cardiac arrest, stroke, they need it quick. So, you know, we got to build the confidence up of the citizens of these three towns backed up with privatized services poured down. We got to build it back up. There's still a bunch of public relations that has to be done before I can kick back on Easy Street. And hopefully after the first year, I can have it built back up where I can kinda go to bed and not sleep.
We've cut almost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars off of our original budget by going, I wouldn't say a cheaper ambulance, but a different model of ambulance. Not the big box that you see running through here now, but the van type ambulances, which are easier on maintenance and much cheaper to purchase. Also, we've eliminated a part-time person and cut back almost bare minimum till we're sweeping by.
What happened to LiveTech's businesses? They, uh, they were jumped.
They were seized.
They were wore out. Well, they were seized. The ones they took back, they were junked, sir. You can ask some of your firemen. We've seen them pull up on scene with radiator fluid spewing out, pulled over on the side of the road. They're junked. Uh, Bonham Fire Department, they bought four ambulances from East Texas Medical Center and the first thing they had to do is spend seven thousand dollars on each of them to put new motors in. So you're, you're better off buying two new ambulances and ban that. Under warranty with no maintenance.
And run them and every three years change them out. I'm sure y'all have the same program with your squad cars. I mean, that's basically what we'll wind up doing with these ambulances, is every three years change them out.
And the citizens of Howe, I know for a fact, there's been ambulances from the city of Denton in Howe, city of White Run, McKinney, and Sherman running calls along with Vail Savoy, because they can't deal with one truck.
What you, uh, if you're gonna say you wanted to replace the ambulances, are you accruing some, have you gotta build in the budget where you're accruing some money so?
As.
Or is that, is that in the operating budget?
Hopefully, cross our fingers, hopefully that will take place in that three-year period. If not, it's thirty-nine thousand a year.
But it's lease purchase anyways.
Right, that's right.
So you would just.
But at the end of three years, at the end of three years, you have something to trade back in. Not completely wore out, but you have some trade-in value and that's gonna bring it down a little bit. So that's gonna make that next annual payment probably and hopefully be a little cheaper. Or maybe step up with the trade-in, step up to a bigger hand, you know, start at the bottom and work your way to the top.
Are you gonna have Arthur Anderson do an audit on this every year so we know if you're making a profit?
Believe me, if I'm making a profit, everybody here's gonna know about it, okay?
That's also, I believe, we've bothered by Medicare and Medicaid. There's certainly expenses in the general public that you know about where we have to make our fires, our fire station eighty-eight compliant. Nor we can be on Medicare and Medicaid.
Yeah, this is something that, that we've got to do is if it's handy, it's got to be handicapped assessment. And once we put those ambulances in there under the city of Van Alstine.
And a lot of these.
There's a, there's a bunch of expenses that, that Howe and Gunner and, and the county's really not seeing because they're not in this place. It's not gonna cost city of Howe or city of Gunner.
There's nothing in our budget for rent to house the fire station, nothing in our budget for the utilities that we're gonna use that's coming out of balance in Fire Department's budget instead of the investment.
And Grayson County is approved there for some business?
Yes, sir.
Well, approved.
Pending, what, the city of, city of, city of Van Alstine deciding.
In other words, everybody has to be, Van Alstine, Howe and Gunner, all three cities have to be yes. And then the county will say yes. Right, we got another fifty committees.
It was like the previous contract where everybody signed, the county and the city of Van Alstine and the city of Howe and the city of Gunner. And a lot of expenses that you don't see as well going into the business, the heart monitor, you know, the recondition with the factory warning heart monitors over seven thousand dollars. The cost of it is up to three thousand dollars. A lot of money.
EMS business has, uh, I had no idea.
Steve doesn't limit us about everything. I mean, just what we talked about. I went in on any of the other stuff that started out with a little bit of trouble.
Ryan, what's your input on this?
Well, the short version of my input is that you guys made the accepted as proposal. I, I can't speak to the money issues, but, but I can speak to the quality of service that I feel like this guy provides you. Because we see them a lot out on calls with Fire Department. They're quite capable of doing what they're telling you they're gonna do. This, you just heard, so y'all are their last stop in this place. They'll stop there, they're going with plans. Don't put pressure on you.
Can we get how much out of your budget?
Do you have a budget, Ryan? Budget?
Thank you.
It, it's gonna be a different kind of ambulance service, something that y'all never seen. You're gonna have somebody follow up visits for patients. We live at a hospital. Our paramedic will give him a self-addressed stamp card, what do you think about our service? I don't know if y'all see any of the people in the house out there, call any names or company names, but some of these paramedics get out of the truck. You can't tell if they're a bystander or a paramedic. They get out their pants tucked in their boots, their shirt unbuttoned, they got a Dale Earnhardt cap on. You can't tell who they are.
You guys are gonna be recognizable?
Yes, sir, they will have a. They will have a uniform and they will state who they are and what they are and that. They will not be a wrinkle on pieces of their clothes.
Which is required by law. Running ambulance business, some companies, I will not mention names, you have to be identified by your name, first initial level of certification. You couldn't tell if these guys just walked off the street.
It's gonna be a service that, that, that nobody's seen around here.
This is the first time that, that, that citizens of this part of the county have had opportunity to have a EMS service that is a government entity, a version of, 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 of profit. And that in itself appeals to me because I know. And that in itself appeals to me, because I know the kind of personality it's going to have working for it. And he's got a lot of, uh, resources, his personnel. And I'm sure some of my guys can be volunteers to stay in the station down there if they need to work with us.
Well, here's, here's, here's the plan. The application for employment is about that big. Okay? And, and I want to know everything about you, come down to your credit, okay? And, and most people say, well, your credit doesn't have anything to do with your job too. Has everything in the world. Tom Mozinski there is a police officer, he can tell you what he went through to fill out an application for Collin County Sheriff's Department. He went through a whole bunch of screens. But my intentions are, is getting good qualified people. Okay? And, and when we put out for applications for jobs, then I'll send them, we review every one of them. Okay? And hopefully, some of the Howe firefighters will put in applications, okay? Uh, there's not going to be too many of my personnel in Van Oosteen that's going to be able to do it. Okay? Because they're relatives. Okay? So, that's, uh, and I even thought about quitting, so these relatives could have a job there. But they said, no, stay where we're at. Because we want to keep the Fire Department and everything together, and if you step out, then it's twelve feet. Well, maybe not, maybe not so, somebody could step in and take it over. But I'm not going to be able to use a whole bunch of people out of my department. Only a couple of them. So we're, we're going to have to have people from, from Gunner and Howe putting out applications to get in. And that is a good thing, because if a person works down there, but from Howe, and he makes a call here, these people in this city already know possibly who this guy is. So there's a good input to the City of Howe having one of their own citizens working on this ambulance. It makes it a whole lot easier to talk to somebody if you know them.
There's a whole lot of difference, difference in the patient care you get. When I worked for Don Fletcher, I ran ambulance service through the City of Howe. I liked all the people I picked up in the hall. Companies down there right now, the past companies, forgive, I don't remember anybody who lived in Howe, Van Oosteen, or Gunner worked for it.
So you see, by, by getting these people from these cities and these Fire Departments, it's already paramedics and EMTs, they're going into a city where people already know you. So it's going to make it easier for the citizens to deal with an EMS service. And they're going to get some quality care, because they already know these people. You see what I'm saying? It, it all works hand in hand. It's going to take every one of us to make it work, and we all have to work together as a team. I mean, from your paramedics, your cities, your fire chiefs, everything. You're still going to need your first responders and your Fire Department. Okay? Never turn down any help. I don't. Okay? So...
Yeah, this is really going to be a hard bullet to fight, you know that? Hurt, whatever it is is wrong, you know, because of the budget. But, you know, we're between a rock and a hard place. I mean, we have to have ambulance.
Yes, each and every, each and every city is in between a rock and a hard spot, because each one of the cities needs it. But at the same time, we want to get it as reasonable as possible. Okay? But then again, I don't want to be two hundred thousand dollars in the hole at the end of the year, and I know what will happen if I drop it back and y'all pay twenty-three hundred a month, and Gunner pays three hundred thousand a year. It's not going to work. That's why the privatized services is not being able to stay because the revenue is not there.
Well, we had this discussion a couple, three years ago.
Right.
At the county.
That's when we started preparing this. We, we didn't throw this together since Life Tech pulled out. We, we, when Life Tech came in, we started working on it.
I gave them one year, they lasted eighteen months. Okay, see, here's the difference in Van Oosteen than Howe and Gunner, is they're housed with us. And we're able to see everything that takes place, and how these people act, and how they dress, and where they're at when a call comes in, and how they clean up after themselves. And we've had some slops. As a matter of fact, uh, I called the lock dog down and shut my whole fire station down, had him lock every door on, which I got a trip to the mayor's office the next morning. But I got somebody's attention. I'm not going to live with slops. So we got that kind of squared away, they kind of started cleaning up after themselves, and then three months later, it brought back to a new start. So it's never ending battles with the privatized ambulance service. So, yes, those figures are a little steep, but that's the best we can do with it to provide an EMS service that the citizens of, of these three cities deserve. And I'm sorry that they are so high.
Well, breaks tears of my eyes.
Well, I wish I could do something about it.
No, it just don't range.
The bad thing about it, grand money, grand money's out there, but we can't apply for the grand money to work in the business.
So there is a chance to get some grand?
Yes, well, that, this is, this is what I'm saying, we, there's a bunch of stuff we can't do because we're not in business. You see, that's what I was saying, well, boy, years from now, we might come back to City of Howe and say, hey, you don't need to pay but X amount of dollars.
Throw your party.
Yeah, well, I mean, we might be able to reduce that, and fifty-one thousand.
I'm not going to mean to put Brad on the spot here, but he knows that we'll do it in, in, we show fifty thousand dollars a profit first year, we're going to come back. All we care about doing is breaking out even. We can't, you know, as far, as far, as far as the, uh, grand money, we can't counter chickens while they hatch. I, I wholeheartedly recommend any money they save, you can give to me and I'll spend it for you.
Give it to the Alphabell. Split it between Alphabell and Oosteen.
I have a question, you know, I, I granted, you're all elected officials to run this city, I see total shock up there on that platform, because y'all all got a handout, and the audience absolutely does not know what he's talking about every time you bring up the word budget. What in the world were we paying for privatized ambulance services versus what?
Twenty-eight thousand, that's what we're...
Twenty-eight thousand versus fifty-one thousand? Thank you.
And currently, the budget numbers that we have are thirty thousand for ambulance services.
So we're, we're twenty-one thousand dollars there. So that's where everybody up there is in shock.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Well, I was in shock too, when, when the figures first came out. We done went back and took a hundred fifty thousand off of.
Commitment motion, or?
Um, I need to, um, y'all can reject, or, or you can accept it.
I'll make a motion.
You can accept a proposal, or have a motion for Thomas to accept the proposal from Van Oosteen.
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion? All four?
We would like to see them back, if, if we've got some...
Believe me, I'm an honest man. If I tell you it's going to rain tomorrow, get your raincoat out. And I hope, I hope, I hope next year, when it comes around to it, that I'm able to shock you. You might need some of that EMS. And I hope it works that way, okay? Not that you're going to need EMS, but I can come back to you and say, hey, we can lower this now. And that's, if it happens that way, then I'll be back.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you.
We'll see you finish your court that night.
Now I'm going to finish my vacation.
It's been quite long. We have a discussion on a request from John Lawrence, a request for water for an annexation annexation of a forty-five meter track located on M 902 East.
The annexation matter I'd like to counsel later, because I, the places that I thought would make the difference on the lotside, they had talked in Grayson County, unless I'm in the city, on city water, city sewer, or unless there's a new septic treatment plant, very expensive, so I've got to have acre lots regardless, in case of that, uh...
So you're just going to do this on the purchase of water?
Right, right.
Okay, thank you.
And the water request is due to, to get a preliminary plant in Grayson County, I've got to have a written letter from the, from five water farms. So I can't use the well up, since I'm in the state of Howe, but I've got to give it to you guys. And I did bring out the, uh, I've got a sketch, and this will get it to the engineer who's engineering. But if you go out east of Howe, into Big S curve, and it straightens out, there's a tree line here, this is where your water meter is, that's your fire height, that's about a hundred feet from there into the property line, maybe a hundred and twenty. And this is where the big trees are at, the old trees, this is the tree line. So this would be the eastern boundary, this would be the western boundary. I'm going to preserve the trees with a, uh, common area. And so it's ready to go around, these are the five, the five hundred feet. It's ready to go around, couple sides, couple sides, couple sides, four and a half.
That's a hundred feet from now to...
What leads to the property line, property line, a hundred and one hundred feet. So I would probably, Howe here, do one road door, come up, and just live around. And then we'd be at two inches of water here, this would be the six inch bank going around. And then the two inch water line would come over and go down to serve the water lots. The forty-five meters would be thirty-eight lots. Uh, you'd be getting, uh, service there. They arrange enough lots out of the nature, I think there are just one or two, eight acres. This is the, the existing fire height. This would be the six inch bank, carry the fire height, and then come over with the two inch water to service these two lots. And a lot can even get preliminary approval, I doubt that the letter from the City of Howe, state, state, what's the lobby letter, intended on me meeting all the requirements of the City of Howe and the, uh, Grayson County.
Can we get to your letter?
I need one.
He's also, he's built some homes around the middle of the Metro Street in Van Oosteen, very, very nice.
He says, what, is it done in Georgetown, Michigan?
I've got, uh, this would be my first subdivision, I'm a builder, I've built, I've got a house now, a spec house I built in Graywood Heights, uh, just the new two-story when you go in on the right, if y'all would drive by. And that would be the typical house that I hope, uh, to build it here. They will be homeless association, uh, and there will be some, the price range, I'm trying to target this between one fifty to one twenty. I think that probably is what the market is, that's what the need is, but I can still put some restrictions, uh, not that against garage facing the street, but acre lots, they could, they could have a front acre house, but they could come around the side, so that we don't have a garage door facing the street. I'm looking probably ten on twelve pitch in them, uh, and probably eighty percent, eighty-five percent correct. You know, I will, I will make it affordable, but also make it nice, nice subdivision, not only now, but five or ten years from now.
No manufactured home.
No manufactured home, no, sorry. I, I would like to find some land and develop some manufactured home, so. Appreciate your time.
Any more questions, Mr. Smith?
Make a motion, we can give a letter.
Say it's about water.
We have a motion in this second, from Martin Sam, just to provide a letter to Mr. Smith, for sale of water in the city of Howe, for his subdivision. Any further discussion? All four? All four, no?
Thank you.
Now we have discussion regarding the purchase of the length of property located on South Union Street. Mr. Lancer?
Yes, ma'am. Didn't I have him when he left? No, I just, this is something that's been ongoing on topic, I did a while, through the past few years, I saw what I did. But, uh, I came up with the, the deal that y'all are leading in the room, I've already found out, I don't think it's enough to the police station, so, uh, I know that, but I, I do want to submit it as a consideration of solution to problems you're going to have eventually, uh, I'm sure applying more room for your city maintenance, water sewer, maintenance department. And, uh, I am going to put this on the market before too terribly long. And, uh, they joined your property there, uh, I know at this time they're using the backend of it, of course it's with my permission, no problem with that. But, uh, if I do have some, it's going to be ready for the binding of y'all, I know that, uh, this is a part, I know what they're going to do, and I do. I think I have a handout, uh, that lists all the buildings, the sizes, I'm ready to fill that in, so that we're going to have answering on the job. I know it would be an ideal maintenance, I mean, it's outside, it's, it's, I also, I put down at the bottom, I would really see, um, if you judge your interest in it sometime in the near future, in my future, I'm sort of a mixed citizen, I'm a part of a, a, a lot of, but, uh, like I said, if you have any questions, uh, I think that's a good one, building, and everything, the office is all being there, it's, uh, it has three rooms, plus the bathroom, and, uh, it's being here, and, 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 the big park is built, they've kind of built, six inches of acre, it's a heated building, it is wired for anything practically, like three page deft issue, it has, it has air, uh, air compressor wired into it, it's running around, uh, air, anywhere you need it in the building, of course, uh, a set of half acre land, which most of it is off the ground. This is something that we all consider, and I'm checking that anyway. Any questions? Back to the police department.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Public hearing. There's been a request from Bill Stanlaw for variance on the minimum front and rear yard requirement. Going to change the case.
I might bring enough handouts to the audience, geez, I do have a couple of years that, uh...
Just wait, then we're going to change the case.
Oh, okay.
Let me finish my third one. Okay. There's been a request from Bill Stanlaw for variance on the minimum front and rear yard requirement of property located at the corner of Neal and Nelson Street, two edition block two, lot number ten. The minimum rear yard requirement is thirty feet, the request varies ten feet, the front yard requirement twenty-five feet, the request varies nineteen feet seven inches, propose to use new construction residential.
Well, I had a meeting last night planning the zoning, and unfortunately, we didn't have a force, so I have nothing to do with them. But let me tell you, uh, part of this, I think, is, is really wrong. The top of the plan that you're looking at is the north side of the lot. Basically, I thought I had a lot down there that was a hundred, a hundred and forty foot deep. Well, somewhere in the passage of time, the city's taken five foot, five inches off the south side of it, so I only got ninety-four foot, seven inches. And my house is sixty-five foot north to south. It's an L-shaped house with the garage on the north end. Uh, I had planned on putting the north side of the garage ten foot off the property line, and this would have given me twenty-five foot setback off of Young Street. Now, the fact that, uh, you mentioned the thirty foot yard, actually, by doing that, I would really have a thirty-three foot backyard. But the, the garage itself is set within ten foot of the property line. I can move it back further, but if I really don't want to, I would like to leave room to be able to drive behind that if necessary. And I'm also setting the house back off of Neal Street, twenty-nine feet, and that gives me almost forty foot of side yard on the west side of the house. And actually, the house itself was set back more than twenty-five foot, but it's got six and a half foot porch on it, that's only be setting back nineteen foot and seven inches. And that's what I'm really asking a variance for. I really don't think I need a variance on the backyard. Here's what we're talking about here, the backyard from the north side of the garage to the property line. Sorry, y'all don't have a copy of this? I want to set this ten foot off the property. In doing so, I can make this porch nineteen foot, seven inches off of Young Street. And that, that's what I'm asking for. Which I don't think is really unreasonable, I understand we all, we're nation laws, and we've got to have them, but I'm not going to change it a little bit, really, that's what a variance is for.
And this is for your private home?
Yes.
This is your retirement home?
No, it's hers.
No, we'll tell them, Bill owns the house, Bill owns the house, it's going to be behind this place.
She moved to this one, you're staying in?
That's right.
Which one of your kids is going to move in? I said, I hope none of us do. I want her to build a one-bedroom house, and other kids can move back home, you know? She wants a big three-bedroom house. You know, life is in reverse.
Well, I might wanna sell it, I might wanna rent it, you know, and you can rent or sell that easier.
Well, initially, the house that we're living in, we plan on renting, but eventually, we might wanna sell it. And I don't really wanna shove this house right up against it because it would affect the value. It, of course, it wouldn't bother me none because there's really no access on the north side of the garage or all, it's just a couple of windows, a little light in, that's all I have.
Is there any utility easements that would be affected by this?
No. Well, I mean, with a porch, yeah, but what, what he's wanting to do is not gonna hurt him.
So if we have to go work on water sewer, we're not gonna tear it?
We'll still have room to work on it.
Could not, could not affect the home?
He's got, yes, he's got plenty of room on, on Neal Street, which if I'm not mistaken, the water on Young Street's across the street from, from you.
Probably is.
And then the water on, the water on Neal, he'll have, he'll have the right setback.
Get this, they face Neil. And the reason I did this, I'm getting old. And I want to, the garage is over on, on so travel street, I didn't want to knock in and out on Young Street because there's, there's a lot more traffic on Young Street. And, uh, just either use the alley or put the garage entrance on Neal and face out. I just wanna stop facing the house, so I raise the windows in a spring and a hall, and the wind blow through and... I'm getting cranky in my old age, I'm gonna think my way.
Where is Young Street located?
Young Street is an extension of that, I'll tell you.
Yeah, I mean, where, where is it?
It's on the south side.
Go straight down to that above.
Well, this is, yeah, this is down there. This is the front of the house, it will face Young Street. Neal Street is over there on the east side with a garage entrance. Yeah, my other house sits up here like this, and you know, it's just a wall, a range on house. This, this area right here, this back porch, probably, I'd say like a forty, thirty-three feet of backyard. He just, he just doing his job, city manager.
I thought, the first time I read it, I thought this thing was gonna be about five foot and two inch of travel. What he, what Bill wants to do, I don't know.
This will be ten.
Yeah, it's a property.
See, this old property has been in her family nearly a hundred years. And it initially was lodged nine ten eleven A twelve, or an old city flat, each one a big, each fifty foot wide, a hundred and forty foot deep. But it's locked every nine, it's, you know, on the side of it, along Young Street, and somewhere or another, they expanded the street, or... It may just be easements, I don't know that they've got, you know? I wasn't aware of it when I, the reason I had the plan drawn, I was gonna do something, that I had a hundred foot lot placed, you know, I'm just, you know, barely gonna get out here, but the wire...
Who's west of me?
Who's west of me? No one. There's a, uh, there's a lawyer out of Tennessee. Yeah, that lot west of me, I think it's on the first one, that's the paint body shop. Right, right, it's behind the... Yeah.
This is all residential, too.
Yeah, it's all shit, sixteen, so it's happening back there. Of the five planning and zoning members last night, I didn't get a negative out of anyone. Granted, they couldn't do business because they didn't have a form, but no one seemed to be really opposed to it. So when I know the chair, Philip's here tonight, anyone else? I don't think so. But I didn't, uh, I didn't really hear any opposition to, to them.
Any questions, Mr. Smith?
So this is two, but your, your plans are gonna be for twenty-one hundred?
Just eat it out.
Sounds like it's improving the value of the area, to me.
And we're gonna end the public hearing. Uh, there was not a planning and voting recommendation due to the license forms last night. But if the council, we can approve or not approve Mr. Stanwell's request. I recommend we approve Mr. Stanwell's request and let him go to the council. On it?
Second.
On it? On favor? Block one, yes. Mayor's indication. We need to set a couple of dates. Um, we need to set a date for special meeting to discuss proposing water line and joining the coalition. And we also need to set a date for public meeting in regards to the place of law.
What about that calendar mark?
Mr. Calender?
Uh, next week.
Okay. So we're on the weekend of twenty-nine?
They ain't right telling us, do you want that coalition, there's gonna be some people come up and give a presentation, probably take it down.
Yeah, that, the, I'm, I would suggest, I mean, we can do it in one meeting, but it's probably gonna be, it may take two, I hope not. The coalition, what it is, is the water line, if ever coming from Lake Tacoma to Indian Melissa. And, uh, what it is, is some of the aquifers in the county are drying up. And we're trying to get some surface water to the area, but we don't have no water.
And I believe that this allows those people from having buy actual acreage in the lake.
Right.
Buy extra ones?
Acreage in the lake, to get surface water. This is gonna be, this is gonna be treated water from Sherman all the way down. It's pretty good present, it's pretty good present, son.
So what is the weekend of twenty-nine?
Now, I reckon one, two, three, get away with it.
Well, set the date for public meeting, I don't think it's gonna be that hard to do.
Why just not do it two?
Okay.
How about, uh, twenty, six?
Next week is not, next month.
How about the first of August?
Thursday, August first? We'll need to check with Mr. Ross on this road, meeting like this, we have to have it looked at.
It was only the sixth, that's Tuesday. That is the next two, next two, Tuesday night, that's the...
August sixth?
First, I'm sorry, first.
August first? Six o'clock is? Six thirty better? Okay, that means what?
No, it's, it's, it's...
So August first at six thirty?
Are y'all gonna do both, ladies?
Yes.
We'll probably, uh, probably do that.
That's the...
Six thirty.
Do we wanna do the water coalition and then public hearing and...
I thought that's what they were talking about, you know, I mean, yeah.
August first at six thirty?
And then public listen, probably. That is what they can make, I'll, I'll call them tomorrow, find out if they can be, I know Jerry Chapman's gonna be in, get this through. This is, you can get back on.
Do you have it on your calendar, chief?
On my calendar.
Thank you. Is there any more business before the council? Any other motions to adjourn? We are adjourned? Thank you.